We're going to have a public hearing on Article Two, which is the River District Development Project. It's a bond hearing. And then it's -- we're going to do this for 30 minutes, so we have some presentations to make, and then we'll take questions as well. At 6:30 I will close the bond hearing, and we will open the budget hearing with all of the other articles under warrant at this point. Excuse me. So I'm going to call the bond hearing to order, and I will read the first -- I'll read this bond article. This is a very long warrant article. It really is divided into two sections: infrastructure and road repairs, et cetera, for the River District area, and then there's another section which has to do with other parts of town that have sidewalk and road repair listed as well. And the third part of it is just simply that we're funding an engineering component to this, as well as the infrastructure repairs in these two areas. Article Two, River District Redevelopment Project.
No.
Yeah?
Is that Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, let me read this.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Hmm?
Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance first, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy. Article Two, River District Redevelopment Project, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $900,000 for the engineering, sewer, and storm drain infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, Riverwalk, and -- I cannot pronounce the word -- A-P-P-U-R-T-E-N-A-N-C-E-S for the River District Infrastructure Reconstruction Project, and to acquire and/or swap land and/or rights of way easements and buildings on Amman Uzik Street, Bridge Street, Main Street, Meadow Street, Mill Street, and Saranack Street without further vote of the town. For such purposes, and furthermore, to fund community sidewalk improvements, repairs, additions, and/or replacements on Bronson Street, Cottage Street, Elm Street, Mount Eustis Road, Pleasant Street, South Street, and Riverside Drive, and additional sidewalks in the town, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $900,000 of bonds and/or notes in accordance with provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, and to authorize the municipal officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon. Furthermore, to authorize the selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend grants, donations, and other funding sources that are available for such purposes. Funds raised by this appropriation shall be expended only if matched by a minimum of $2 of grants, donations, or other funding sources for every dollar of this appropriation. This is a non-lapsing appropriation until December 31, 2019. It is estimated that 2/3 of this appropriation will be funded by taxes and 1/3 by sewer use revenue and/or reserves. There is no impact for 2016. Tax impact for 2017 and 2018. Proposed term 15 years. Recommended by the selectmen, 3 to 0. Recommended by the Budget Committee, 5 to 4. For this article to pass, we require a 3/5 ballot vote in March. Who would like to speak to this first?
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I'm just going to go over some of the River District presentation for the bond. Some of the community benefits are $7.3 million in town-owned infrastructure improvements; 3.2 million of that is for roads; 1.6 million is of sidewalks; there will be 14 streets and roads, including the Amman Uzik Bridge, Bronson, Colonial Court, Senior Housing, Cottage, Elm, Main, Meadow, Mill, Mount Eustis, Mount Eustis, Ski Hill, Pleasant, Saranack, South, Riverside Drive, and Riverwalk Phase III. There's $1 million in sewer infrastructure improvements; 9/10 of a million dollars of improvement in water; 6/10 million dollars of pedestrian bicycle bridge; tax base increase, estimated new tax revenue of over $234,000 per year; and reductions in maintenance costs and fixing old -- the oldest infrastructure in town. This area has very old sewer and road infrastructure. The River District Sidewalk Bond. Project costs for the $900,000 bond will be partially funded. The 7 point -- will partially fund the $7.3 million community infrastructure and sidewalk project. There's $2,100,000 of the project costs have been raised; 1.65 million in grants and state aid; 250,000 in community donations; and 200,000 in prior town funding. The tax impact. The $900,000 bond is estimated to be paid out by 2/3 taxes and 1/3 sewer infrastructure or sewer revenue and reserves. No tax impact in 2016, and 10 cents per thousand in 2017. It's an estimate. No bond money will be spent unless there's received a 2 to 1 match, and in some cases as much as a 6 to 1 match. And I'm just going to briefly go over some of the presentations. Some of you may have seen this before, but bear with me. This photo outlines the project area, some improvements that will be made. You can see the sidewalk extending out. Some other project benefits is grow the tax base. According to a study from the New Hampshire Department of Economic and Labor Market Information Bureau, 500 jobs would be created. There will be improved public safety due to road realignment and pedestrian off-road transportation. We'll have an enhanced downtown pedestrian bicycle access. Improved transportation and utilities infrastructure. And the scenic riverfront will be improved, which is undoubtedly going to help with Littleton's tourism. Some of the issues that will be addressed. This area has the oldest storm in sewer water -- sewer system in Littleton. There's infiltration into the -- our sewer system right now, stormwater, which reduces our capacity at the sewer plant, and also reduces our capacity for future growth and development. There's 50,000 in emergency repair costs, I believe, was that this year? And that's going to keep happening just because this sewer infrastructure is so old. Storm, sewer cross connections. What I was mentioning earlier, the unnecessary sewer treatment costs and river contamination with the upgrading of the sewer system will reduce the amount of potential affluent that gets not to the sewer plant but into the river, and also reducing the amount of storm water that infiltrates the sewer system that we then have to treat that's added cost. Some of the other issues from stormwater, creation of sinkholes, water line breaks, property flooding, parking lot washouts, missing sidewalks, and unsafe roadways and intersections. This is an example of kind of a disjointed intersection. If you've driven back behind the -- in the River District area, you'll -- you can see that it's kind of a hodgepodge of development, old roads, and missing sidewalks. I almost got hit at this intersection just the other day, pulling out. There's not enough room for two cars to pass safely, especially now with snowbanks. This is -- that's part of the redevelopment. This is planning and engineering completed to date. Completed a long-term strategy in Design Sherret in 2012. The North Country Council Traffic and Parking Study in 2013. Riverside Engineering in 2013. Shoreland Protection Act exemption 2013. Parking Summit 2014. Permaculture Plan in 2014. Engineering Community Input Session 13 and 14. Meetings with property owners in 2013, 14, and 15. Demonstration Project in 2014. And engineering plans have been completed by Horizons Engineering this past year. This is rendition of the pedestrian access. It's kind of small on the screen, but if anybody wants a handout, we can provide you one. It shows the position. And this is the rendition of the street alignment, parking improvements. The street will be realigned to provide for safer travel, also pedestrian off-street travel. And this is from the Design Sherret, I believe, and demonstrates some of the improvements that can be made along this route. This is showing the intersection of Saranack and Bridge Street with 302 and the design for redevelopment, along with the location of where the new Bridge Street pedestrian or multimodal bridge will be. And again, more landscape architectural drawings and renditions. And these are some of the partners. There's probably a few that aren't on there, but it's a few of the partners with the River State and federal support. So far, we have support from New Hampshire Governor Hassan, US Senators Ayotte and Shaheen, Rep. US Representative Custer, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority, Governor Council -- Executive Counselor Kenny's office, and Grafton County Economic Development Council. This is a breakdown of the phase of the project summary. You can see the demonstration projects. We're at 200,000. Phase One, Amman Uzik Street intersection, which is currently getting close to underway. Saranack Street reconstruction, 1 million. Saranack Street and Meadow Street, 1 million. Riverwalk pedestrian bridge, .9 million. Main Street reconstruction, Phase II, 2.2 million. Community sidewalks, Cottage, Pleasant, Saranack, and a number of others, which we've mentioned in the warrant article. And so far, the funding that we've achieved to date, you can see that total 1.8 million from a number of sources, including Littleton taxpayers. These are infrastructure projects that are part of this program. You can see that what we have for percentage of funding. We get from Grove Street reconstruction town funds, 1.8 million. Main Street reconstruction, 800,000 town funds. Non-town funds, 2.5 million. You can see the breakdown of how much is the town percentages for each. And if you see the back real quick, the River District's just as a percentage-wise compared to the others is quite low compared to these other projects. So the bond measure, it would authorize the Select Board to place bond in the future. The amount of $900,000. And the funding will also be from sewer funds as well as taxes, so the 900,000 isn't entirely a tax impact. Where I think we're estimating about 1/3 of that would be from the sewer. It would be town-owned infrastructure improvements, and not likely until 2017 and beyond for any kind of a tax impact. And there's a contingent built into the article that we must receive at least a 2 to 1 match for our funds from state or federal grants or other sources. And so the goal is to use this money to leverage other monies, getting the town to only a 15% contribution to improvements that the town needs to make anyways. So it's either grants or we pay for it totally. I think it's just repeat of the last one. So the funding plan for 2016, 1.1 million application through the Federal Economic Development Administration. In April, $2.2 million for US Department of Transportation. And in the fall, a $0.6 million application to the Transportation Alternatives Program. And that is my answer for the River District. Do you have any questions?
We need some questions because we have to have this hearing open for 30 minutes. So let me pose some of this another way. This is clearly magnet money. By voting this bond in and assuming we can get at least a 2 for 1 match, we clearly are drawing in more money. The message that I think John Hennessy gave us before, just recently, is that the federal people he's met with and others have met with felt we needed to address more of our issues in terms of being able to not just meet our needs with our own local money, but give other funding sources reasons for bringing forward funds to help us. And this community has usually done this on big projects. What makes this a difficult project is that on one level, nobody cares. We're talking about sewers. We're talking about storm drains. We're talking about sidewalks. We're talking about a lot of streets that maybe you never will walk on. But the issue here is that all of this list of things that needs to be done, needs to be done. And if we can draw in federal and state money to help us do it, that helps us in the long run, and it also helps us in terms of our tax bill specifically, locally. So we need to view this money as a magnet. Last year, we asked for 500,000. We lost by four votes. We've now increased this to 900,000. We've increased the geographical area that we're going to be addressing infrastructure repairs with. It's not just on the River District section that we've known up to this point, but clearly this area below Main Street is an area that's been neglected for many years. And we want to bring that area back because we believe it has commercial and living potential and park potential for us. But it's going to take a lot of money. The 7.3 million, you know, if we get to 900,000 and we get a 200 -- if we get a 2 for 1 match, that brings in another 1,800,000. So we're around 4 to 5 million at that point. We're still short, so hopefully we can get more than 2 for 1 match, 4 to 1 match, whatever it would be. So this is a big project for us, and it's a difficult one because it's not like putting up a building. It's not like buying or replacing a bridge. That's very physical and very, very isolated in one area that you can watch and see it. This is a whole underground and above-ground improvement to our community. So, yes, sir?
I can help you. It was up to half hour tonight.
Sure. I would appreciate that.
I've got an anecdote, a short anecdote first, and then a couple of questions.
Okay.
This reminds me, when your opening statement there, when you had the problem pronouncing the word, it was a long town meeting sometime in the past, and we were voting on whether or not to buy a chandelier for the local church. And the final judgment was no, for three reasons. Number one, they couldn't spell it. Number two, no one would know how to play it. And number three, what the church really needed was better lighting. There's a lot of information going on here, and of course, when anyone tries to sell a project, you emphasize the benefits of it to try to get it to go. And I do see that we've expanded the range of the project area as a way maybe to bring more people's interest in the presentation, instead of just going with the River District itself. That interests me. One of the figures that caught my attention was it will create 500 jobs, and 500 jobs is a whole lot of jobs. Now, I'm wondering if a large part of that happens to just be construction workers that come in to work on the project, or how much of this will detail what's on the bill. I can't imagine 500 jobs being created as a long-term part of the program, but maybe I'm wrong.
I'm going to defer to Brody, too. Brody, why don't you come up here and speak to that issue if you could? And obviously, from the federal government's perspective, job creation is an important component here.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Brody, too, I'm a member of the River District Committee, and actually, it was 500 permanent jobs, not construction whatsoever. And it was off the study and all have it. I haven't been able to look through it in detail, but off of John's comments earlier, it was permanent jobs in a mixture of mercantile, hospitality in that area. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, ma'am?
When the -- there was a slide with the different phases, and it didn't say a phase for the sidewalks. What would the plan be for that, or when the back play is put in the plan?
Actually, I don't believe -- where's -- oh, Andrew, there you are. I think the phases may not have that new section in it, but I could be wrong. Does a phase have that in there?
I think it's in there. River District Community Sidewalks.
Okay, it's the bottom one there.
Yeah.
So it's...
It's a comparison. Here we go. Sidewalks.
There we go. See, is that -- is that the plan for it to be at the very end after you've done all this other work? Do you know how much?
Not necessarily. The phases have started at different levels, depending on when we could get some funding in. For instance, the new bridge down on Bridge Street was not part of Phase One. It was a different phase, and the funding came in early. So when that would happen is still, you know, a question, and it has more to do with when funding comes in. Okay. Other questions? Brody?
Excuse me. Do these 500 jobs, are they going to be created by the investors? Or am I misunderstood? Are you going to create 500 jobs? Please be more specific. And who's going to create these 500 jobs? Investors? Or...
Yeah. Part of the -- the number came in from the state based on their -- on the plan that they sent back up here. Remember when John presented this a couple of weeks ago? It was based -- it was sourced primarily to a department in the state that came up with the projections. I'm assuming we're talking some small stores. I'm also -- we're talking ancillary services to service those new businesses that would open. But beyond that, Brody, I can't help you in terms of what it would be, but it would be new businesses being opened down there, or expanded businesses.
They were trying to tell me about two restaurants, and a building, a condominium building, and they're going to create 500 jobs. It's tiny, huh?
Well, it goes back to the question of are these construction jobs or not? And the answer is, the intention is that these are permanent positions. Okay. Dan?
I'd like to make some comments.
Is this related to the bond?
Yes.
Okay.
You're trusting Governor, the senators, who are all behind this thing, who will not put in one penny of their money. It's real easy to say, "I'm for something," and you don't put anything in. None of -- none of -- nothing comes out of your pocket. You're pledging somebody else's money. You've also got government saying this is going to produce 500 jobs. I look at it this way. How many employers employ how many people? If one employer is employing 10 people, that would require 50 companies. If 10 employers were employing 50 people, that -- that's -- they're saying there's going to have 10 companies move in down here? And if you just take that 500 and divide it by what you think a company would employ, you'll get numbers that I do not trust. I don't trust government bureaucrats producing numbers like this, and I don't think you should either. I've got some other things to talk about on this. The users of the water and sewer are the people who should be paying for what they use. I shouldn't have to pay for it. I don't use the water and sewer. If I go downtown and I take a drink out of a fountain or something, and I go to a company down there and I buy their products, then I'm contributing. But I don't use the -- I don't use the sewer. I don't use the water, and neither do a lot of people. The people who do use that should be the people who are paying for this. They've also talked about 2/3 being produced, or the 2/3 of this money is going to come from these other government agencies. That's all tax money. That's still our money. They're talking about $900,000. They don't want to say it's close to a million. If it gets picked up, the interest you're going to pay on $900,000 over 15 years, you're going over a million. They're not talking about this. If the private sector won't build this, there's a reason. Why haven't private companies come in here and said, "We want to build up the River District. We want to do all these things." A private company expects to make a profit, rightly so, and they should. They're not doing this because this is a losing situation. We're going to be paying for this for years, even after it's paid for. If the leaders of this town really wanted this, why haven't they reduced the other warrants that are asking for money? Why haven't the public employees come forward, the schools and the other public employees, and said, "Hey, we're behind this"? Well, they are behind it. But what we're going to do to help this happen, most of the people in this town don't receive automatic raises like the public employees. So why don't they come forward and say, "For the next 15 years, while this is being paid off, we won't take our automatic raises. We're not going to do that because we think this thing should happen." But they're not going to do that. I'll probably have some other comments to make, but just for right now, that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Warren?
I wouldn't get too hung up on the 500 jobs. What happened was, I believe, there needed to be an economic analysis done, and the town was recommended to ask an economist who worked for the Department of Employment Security, by the name of Annette, something like that. She did an economic analysis that probably only other economists could figure out. They do call, I think, economics a miserable science or something along that line. It's so hard for people to understand. And what she projected was that there were certain amount of direct jobs and a certain amount of indirect jobs. For example, the industrial park has about 1,200 to 1,300 jobs in it. The payroll from the industrial park generates additional jobs somewhere else. The hospital has 540 jobs. Their payroll and their purchase of services generates other jobs on top of those jobs. So economists can probably -- will be able to explain it. There are not going to be 500 jobs in the River District. That's not what was said, and I don't think we shouldn't get too hung up on it, but it's certainly a point to bring up. The second thing is that Dan raises the issue about the sewer and the water payers paying it. Well, that's exactly what they're going to do. The share of the project that replaces the sewer and storm drain system will be paid for through either reserves, which the town puts away 9% per year, or built into sewer feed. So 1/3 of the bond costs, at least projected at this point, will be doing exactly what Dan has asked you to do.
Right.
The other 2/3 will pay for the roads and the sidewalks and a whole series of other investments or improvements that we have for the community. I look back to 2008. We voted to spend $1.5 million to redo all of Grove Street from Cottage Street to Elm Street. Sidewalks, road, storm drain, sewer, the whole enchilada. We also agreed to put in the bond to do sidewalks for Chiswick Avenue, Kilburn Street... Kilburn Street, Beckham Woods, Oak Hill Avenue, High Street, Reddington Street, Lafayette Avenue, Willow Street, Elm Street, and Merrill Street. Very similar to what this bond has. The difference is, we paid the whole $1.5 million bond. What being projected is to use the $900,000 to leverage so that we don't have to pay the full amount.
That's right.
And the streets that have been listed in this project, basically, were... And one part has not been explained is that the Selectment Act, through Fred Booty's leadership at the River District Bond, they also had a grant proposal for the Transportation Alternative Project. That went in, and I believe John Yancey told me, we came in 1440 throughout the state on competitive circumstances, and they funded 12 projects. That was agreed to in 2015. So Dick Hamilton had recommended to make the grant more competitive, that you include some other improvements with that and incorporate it into this. So there's really two proposals moving ahead. Tom and it's more than we're doing together. But these were two proposals that were replaced more. They just emerged in one. And that was to do Cottage Street sidewalks. Anyone who's ever walked on Cottage Street sidewalks, they're elevated, they're on handicap accessible, and they're very similar to the sidewalks we replaced in 2008. So what, through the creativity of the River District, they merged those two together and, again, to help leverage so that we could get a better bang for the buck.
Right.
I suggested a couple of streets we added at a Selectment meeting, which were to do Utese Road, go up to Utese Ski Area, which would bring a sidewalk to the Herbert Lane subdivision, the Birchcroft subdivision, and the New York Community Health. And then a right-hand turn could be taken and brought to Colonial Court, which is our oldest senior housing, which I believe was built in 1971. It's never had a sidewalk. Every other senior housing project has had a sidewalk. I felt bad about just getting my opinion. So I asked George McNamara, I said, "What other streets do you recommend?" And he came back with a couple of additional recommendations, which are incorporated. One of them was, currently, there's a sidewalk from South Street to the Montessori School on Bronson Street, but it doesn't go up the hill. His recommendation, if funding is available, to complete Bronson Street throughout. The second, other recommendation that he had was that on Elm Street, we have a sidewalk that was replaced, the 208o, that goes from Main Street to High Street, but there's no sidewalk from High Street up to Oak Hill Avenue. Now, I think it was either four or five years ago, a group of citizens from that neck of the woods, in that part of Littleton, put in a petition warrant article to bring a sidewalk from High Street to the high school. And I think it was a $50,000 appropriation, and the town voted over it. So George's idea was to tie that all up. I think it makes a lot of sense to do that. And then the other one that he had recommended, and again, this is only a function that would be available, was that on South Street, currently, there's a sidewalk on South Street down where Greg Lindgren lives, and it stops there. The sidewalk would then go from that location down to the current bridge, the suspension bridge. And to complete that loop, anybody that drives on South Street, there's a lot of people walking in that section without a sidewalk. So that was some of the idea that was incorporating many people's ideas in. And again, it'll only be done if there's money available. What happened in '08 was we voted to spend the $1.5 million, but we ended up having $350,000 left over, went back to the voters and asked to do additional sidewalks, and they supported it overwhelmingly. So I think what the team put together here is pretty comprehensive, pretty creative, and extremely tax-friendly for what we're looking at.
Thank you, Brian. Forget about the 500 jobs for a minute. Just, and this is really difficult for us. Conceptually, we're talking about things that we don't all see. I took a drive up Upper School Street because it's on our plan for this coming year to fix. And if you go up School Street, past Summit Avenue, and then past East Street, it really gets kind of scary. But what it reminded me of is the fact that this is an old town. This is a town that continually needs to have its pipes replaced, continually needs to have its sidewalks fixed, continually needs to have roads repaired. If for no other reason. We need to talk about job creation because, in part, that's what the governments expect you to talk about. And I'm sure the study that was done was legitimate up to whatever the point is that they need to make for their formulas. But you're right, Brody, you may never see the 500 direct, permanent positions. But we need to think about our sidewalks, we need to think about our pipes. You know, I spent one weekend studying this engineering report. And when you read about our storm drains and our sewers and how the water runs in together, and it's based on age. And the other thing we know, that when they opened up Main Street, they found sewer lines and pipes that they didn't even know existed. So we all live in a kind of old community that continues to need to reinvent itself and upgrade itself. And that's what this bond is about, and it's magnet money. As Brian said, we can't afford to do this ourselves. And so if we can bring in grant money to help us, it's to our benefit. I'm going to close this hearing.
Wait a second. You allowed Brian, and then you talked, and you're not allowing anybody to debate what you said?
No, you can debate it later. You know, we have more opportunities. I'm closing this meeting, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry, we've done 40 minutes.
You took up part of the minutes.
Oh, I did. And I happen to be the person running the meeting, so I apologize for that. But that's who it is.
That's very core.
And I suggest very strongly that you save your minutes and save your notes, and we'll bring this back. Obviously, again, you have the deliberative session where you can speak to these issues and even speak to what I've spoken to, Dan. Okay? I'm going to, I'm going to... Can you hold your comments for... Is it about this particular thing? Okay. If I reopen this, I'm going to have Dan challenging me here.
I have another point to make, too.
I'm sorry?
I said, "I have a point to make, too."
Okay. Let me reopen the meeting because I can do that. And let me pick on two people that haven't spoken yet. Greg?
Thanks, Mel. My name is Greg Eastman. I'm the president of the Littleton Industrial Development Corporation. And LIDC is strongly in favor of this Article II. The Littleton Industrial Park, which was built from the mid, early '70s to date, cost approximately $4 million to build. Of that $4 million, Littleton and LIDC, mostly Littleton, put in $1 million of that. $2 million of that cost to build the park came from the Economic Development Administration, the EDA, the federal government, and $1 million from the state and other agencies. So over the years, and this was done over a long period of time, the town invested into the industrial park. It was crucial that the town did that in order to leverage the funds from the EDA. The EDA loves the industrial park in Littleton because it has been extremely successful. It had the vision of people in the '70s to create it. And we enjoy the benefit of the park today. 1,200 to 1,500 jobs. Produces approximately $60 million in annual payroll, which if you multiply that or give it an economic factor of three, that means $180 million is being generated out of that park every year for our $1 million investment. We're gaining $180 million back into this economy every year. It's a great success story. So when we think that the federal government is not going to respond to this or help us leverage this $900,000 isn't true. Because they do. They will, hopefully. If we don't show that we've got skin in the game, if we don't show that we're investing in our town, in this project, they're much less likely to approve any grants. And I believe the grant we applied for last year of $1,200,000 did not pass muster with the EDA largely or in part because we didn't pass the $500,000 bond issue last year. So from LIDC's perspective, this is a crucial, very important bond, which we're just reinvesting in ourselves. And we're very good at that. Littleton is very good at that. We've done this in the past. We're the envy of many towns in this state because we take care of ourselves. And we look forward, and we know what we have to do. So I just want to put in my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bolt? Is this one more?
Okay, Ron Bolt. I'm not on the commission, but I am on one of the subcommittees. I'm actually a subcommittee. I'm also the energy committee liaison for the commission. So I like the concept of the district. I'm not opposed to it in any way, shape, or form. I see it as a want or a need right now. Certain infrastructure needs to be addressed. But I would like to make a comment. You said this was not a new building, but it is a new loan. And I'd like to go back to 2007, 2008, when spending spree and every valuable project object was approved. And our debt service, the amount we have to pay, principal and interest of those loans, went from under $100,000 to over $1 million a year. It's a significant part of our budget. So I just want to make the point that we're considering adding another $900,000 to our debt at a time when the Parks and Recreation Building at River Park needs to be replaced, and that is not going to be cheap. And the school board is looking at pathways as not a dead end, and they would very much like to, as soon as possible, be a new building down there. So there are other projects in the line, so that's all I want to make.
Thank you. Just a point of information. There are three bonds that will be paid off in 2017. And I don't know what the amount is with what we have left. But it comes, those three bonds, in terms of its interest and principal payments, comes to almost $194,000. So those three are going off, and obviously, whatever the payment would be for this one would be coming out if it passes. Yeah, go ahead.
It was said that this is an old town, and we continually need sewer and water pipes replaced. What is not being said is the poor planning. When I and many other people know beforehand that the vehicle has to be replaced, just about everything has to be replaced. There are things in houses that have to be replaced. This should have been thought of many, many years ago. The fact that these things were going to need to be replaced, they should have figured out what it was going to cost 10 years from now when it's going to have to be replaced, and started taking that from the users who should pay for what they use, not people who don't use it. It was said that $2 million and $1 million were coming from these government agencies. People, government does not produce anything. It doesn't generate anything. It takes and it prints, it doesn't produce. I think the River District... Actually, many people think that I'm against the River District. I'm not. It's a great idea. I'd love to see it happen. But the private sector should be the ones who are building the River District, not the taxpayers, not people who do not directly use it. The money generated by the... I may have the initials wrong. LDIC, LIDC, whatever it is, the industrial park, did not cause homeowners' taxes to be noticeably reduced. So these... You have to really watch what people are saying.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Chad Sturz. I think, you know, ever since I've been voting, which has been 12, 13 years now, since 2018, I think it's fair to say that I think we've passed every single rule of the warrant articles that have been on. If not, it's only been one or two. So I would say that it's also safe to say that you're looking at the sidewalks alone that are going to be improved over the next few, five, six years. They're going to be most of the ones that are in this warrant article. So I think that, you know, what we have to lose to go and try to change the number of sidewalk is that we're going to end up facing them one way or another. So, you know, in the long run, when we look at the warrant article, $900,000, you know, up to, you know, $7.3 million for a total project cost. I like to put stuff a little simpler and easier to think of. I really think of the authorities, you know, pay $9,000, $37,000 over.
Thank you, Chad. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I will now close this hearing of the River District bond. And I thank you all for participating. For those of you who felt that there was something that you really needed to say, and we appreciate that. I'm going to open up our Budget Committee meeting, and we're going to go over 43 warrant articles. We're going to explain these warrant articles to you from a theory standpoint, or more specifically, from a cost standpoint for those articles that are based on generating taxes. And our town manager, Andrew Dorsett, will begin the process of walking through these. And I guess if you have... How do you want to handle this? If you have questions, they can just raise their hands and you'll take those.
After I'm done reading the article.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to read through the article, and then if you have a question after I'm done, feel free to ask. So Article One. To choose necessary officers, including moderator for a two-year term, town clerk, three-year term, two selectmen, one for a three-year term and one for a one-year term, one treasurer for a three-year term, supervisor of the checklist for a six-year term and a five-year term, trustee of the trust funds, one for a three-year term and one for a one-year term, park commissioner, three-year term, and four library trustees, three for a three-year term and two for a two-year term. Article Three. Petition warrant article to change zoning classification. See if the town will vote to change the zoning classification of MAP 44, Lot 23, a 12.1 acre parcel in MAP. MAP Lot 44, 33, a 4.3 acre parcel, presently owned by Kimberly Renee Howard, 1998 revocable trust, situated on the west side of Old Waterford Road and currently in the residential 11, rural and commercial 111 zones. So that these two parcels shall be in the commercial 1 zone. Yes, Dan?
I don't know really what is happening here. I don't know why the person wants that or anything like that. These are just numbers.
Dan, this came before the planning board a couple of weeks ago. I believe it was a couple of weeks ago when we approved it. Apparently, the parcels are commercial 3. There's a rural component to it, and there's a residential component to it. She wants to change it all to residential or commercial 1. I'm Mary, I'm looking at you. Commercial 1 and residential 1, I believe that's the mix. Or is it all commercial?
There's just lots which have three different zones. And the idea is to get them all to be the one.
All the same, right. Now, when you look at commercial 1, commercial 2, and commercial 3, the list of things you can do on these parcels are about the same. There really isn't any change. So you could open up a pet store, or you could open up a pharmacy. You know, there's a number of businesses that are listed there. a number of businesses that are listed there. I believe in discussing this, there was not a representative there for her, there was an attorney there. I'm trying to reconstruct that meeting, but we didn't have a specific idea as to why she wanted it changed, except she wanted it all to be the same. Right? Okay.
Dan, there's a second public hearing on this item at the planning board tomorrow night.
Right. Thank you. Thank you.
It was also reported in the Courier last week, pretty extensive article about that. Andrew, can you tell me what percentage of the vote is required for this article to pass?
I believe it's a simple majority unless it says, do you know? You got a simple majority? Article Four, to see if the town of Littleton will adopt RSA 4141A wherein the selectmen shall have the authority to acquire or sell land, buildings, or both. Any such proposed acquisition or sale shall first be submitted for review and recommendation to the Planning Board and Conservation Commission. Thereafter, two public hearings shall be held regarding the proposed acquisition of sale. If written petition of 50 registered voters is presented to the selectmen, the proposed acquisition or sale shall be intersected, or inserted, I'm sorry, as an article in town warrant for town meeting. There's no tax impact recommended by the selectmen 3O. Questions? Next one. Article Five, sale of town-owned property. Shall the Board of Selectmen be authorized without further town meeting action to sell the following town property after two duly noticed public hearings in accordance with RSA 4114A? 2007 double-wide manufactured home located at Hagan's Manufactured Housing Sales and Service, 2393 St. Johnsburg Road, New Hampshire 18, Littleton, New Hampshire 03561. Yes, Brian?
That was, that piece of property was acquired as part of the River District, one of the River District warrant articles.
That's correct.
And they acquired land in the modular home. Where's the income that goes? Is it going to go back into the fund that's available for rights-of-way acquisitions and different things along that line? Is this, where, where is that money going? Because that has, has a specific purpose to be available to deal with easements, right-of-ways, and land acquisition. And I believe it was a non-lapsing fund also.
Yeah, I believe the way the warrant article is worded, it would go into the unreserved fund balance.
It goes into the general fund to offset taxes unless the selectmen decide to use those funds in another, for another purpose. The selectmen have a right to accept and expend funds throughout the year.
Article Six, sale of town-owned property. Shall the Board of Selectmen be authorized without further town meeting action to sell the following town property after two duly noticed public hearings in accordance with RSA 41144A? Tax map lot 9188, a parcel of .43 acres located in the industrial park, currently leased by Fairfield BP LLC. For Fairfield BP LLC to purchase this property for $7,500. Dan?
Do the businesses in the industrial park purchase their land and their buildings they're on or do they lease? And, and if they, are, are you allowed to purchase the land or is it just leasing?
I'd have to defer to Greg Easton.
You can't purchase?
Yep. Order. I'm not aware of any property owner up there that leases the land. All land is owned by the property owners. What happened on this, this piece of property here, those mistaken deeds, this is a sliver of land that runs across from FedEx. It's 26 feet wide and the stat runs 700 feet down the road, ends up, so it's .43 acres. When the deal was made for tenant building being put up there and land being swapped with Paulson's, the maps all indicated that there was not a sliver of land owned by the town. When they went to register deeds, there was this little sliver, and that's what this is taking care of.
Thank you.
Because of the deadline on the building, the town had to lease that property to, whatever the name is, the company, so that he could get the building put out there.
Thank you.
Next one. I forgot to remove that one. Thank you. Shall the town raise an appropriate, sorry, an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purpose set forth therein totaling $8,395,342. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be $8,351,700, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments required by previous actions of the town or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 4013 and take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. Estimated tax impact is $7 and 12 hundreds, I guess, yeah, one cent for a thousand recommended by selectmen 3O, recommended by Budget Committee 61. This is a breakdown of operating budget overview for the revenues. 2015 approved and 2016 default and proposed. 2015 adjusted revenues at time of tax rate setting was $3,102,000. 2016 default revenues are estimated to be $3,099,298. The difference of $89,278 between the 2015 and 2016 budgets. Breakdown of revenue increases. Pilots, this year we went through a payment in lieu of taxes with properties that were assumed to be charities in the past. Increased in motor vehicle registration and all other revenues, the 10,623. The 2016 proposed revenues adds 1,173 over the default. See, it's only a slight change between the proposed and the default. Sorry, this is so tiny. Yes?
The certain adjustments required by previous action, will they amount to as much as the difference between the proposed and the...
So those changes will, are the difference between the 2015 and the 2016 default. So those include things like union contracts, other contracts in place, and things that are required by law or contract increase.
Right. But, but will these, will these certain adjustments take the default budget over the, over the article?
No.
That is the default.
The, the, the proposed?
Right.
So the, the default is over the 2015 approved budget. So the proposed would be in addition to 15 or default. The 20, the proposed is, was the one approved by the Budget Committee?
Right. Is, okay, is the proposed budget the, the $8,395,000?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the default is the $8,300,000?
Correct.
That's correct.
Plus certain adjustments? I'm...
Default includes adjustments.
It is default, it's last year.
Oh, yeah. Adjustments are in there. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So this is a look at the expenditures. If you, you'll see the 2015 approved budget was $8,64,738. And then the total subtractions in the, this is the default.
Default.
Yeah. What is $96,261 and the added costs total $332,40. Total default budget would be the $8,351,70. And this is the 2016 default and 2016 proposed. So the 2016 default, as we said in the last slide, was the 8.3 million. And each one of these is what adds up to the additional costs in the proposed budget. You can see the highway department has an increase in the salt budget, $25,000. There's an increase in gas and diesel, $5,000. Some adds is the regular part-time officer to full-time, I think it's at $25,364. Police Department facilities and maintenance, lighting and doors, $2,700. Wages and benefits increase, $18,000. Finance increased, cost audit, $2,000. Personnel administration merit, new hire allowance, $2,000. Personal personnel administration increased, cost of health wanted ads, $900, increase in data processing, $3,500. Legal for planning and zoning, $3,000. Planning and zoning ads, $1,000. Cemetery groundskeeping, $1,000. Increase in deductibles, property liability, $2,000. Fire department, two-thirds chair training, $6,100. Increase in legal for collective bargain agreement, we've got $10,000, we have two contracts coming up. Increase in parks for groundskeeping and equipment maintenance, $2,500. Added parks program advertising, $1,000, and added stipend for offer house management, $2,000. Brings us to a total of $113,604 over the default. Decreases in the proposed budget. Executive mileage reduction, 500. Town clerk vote registration removed, 500. Decrease in building maintenance, 5,000. Change in airport support, air, the regional airport support is 5,000, or, I'm sorry, 1,464. Fire department, changes in staffing, 7,165. Lighting improvement, reduction, 2,000. Reduction in electric and heating, 1850, and reduce bone service for larynx, 300. Gets us to 18,779 reduced in proposed over default. Any questions on that? Article Eight, police cruiser and safety equipment. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 for the purpose of purchasing and installing police and police cruiser safety equipment into cruisers and/or to offset purchase costs and setup of a new police cruiser and to authorize withdrawal of 3,000 from the special detail revenue fund and to further authorize the police chief to trade in or sell older and unused equipment. No tax impact, recommended by select board 3O, recommended by Budget Committee 71. Questions? Article Eight. Purchase of a new police cruiser, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $43,357 for the purpose of purchasing and setup of a new police cruiser as a replacement for a seven-year-old cruiser for the purpose of reducing the cost of a new cruiser. Nope, I skipped a line there, I think. And further authorize selectmen to trade in or sell. Go ahead.
I took a ride today in the car that we're going to be replacing. It's a 2009 Ford Explorer. It's a four-wheel drive vehicle. It's a large vehicle. It has a little over 110,000 miles on it currently. I always look for rust because it's important that we either know that we have a vehicle that's rusting away or not. This vehicle has some rust on it, but it's not extensive. It's in the, it's in the back of the vehicle as well as in what we used to refer to as rocker panels. It's beginning to encounter increasing maintenance costs and it's beginning to acquire a very distinct knock in the transmission. At 110,000, we, we debate this issue because there are people sitting in the room and they're, including the person standing here, who can sometimes generate close to 200,000 miles on a car. What we have to remind ourselves about these vehicles is that they're driven by a number of drivers, they're driven hard and they're driven a lot. So we purchased this Ford in 2009 and it's clearly time to replace it. They want to replace it, they being the police department, with a similar vehicle, a four-wheel drive, not necessarily an all-wheel drive, because the vehicle sits off the ground a little bit higher than the other SUVs in the fleet and can actually get to certain areas in town a little bit easier than some of the other cars when in need of getting somewhere. It has a large storage capacity. This vehicle carries equipment that the police officer with me today, Captain Tyler, wouldn't get into the specifics, but it has a lot of different kinds of emergency equipment. And it's, again, larger and they would like to replace this car, as I say, with one that's very similar because of its capacity, because of its ability to drive in, on terrain that some of the other vehicles sometimes have problems with. And it's not a pursuit vehicle per se. It's a large SUV and it's used for other purposes, including police work. But it's, it's being looked at for replacement with a similar vehicle because of its capacity and its, its high, high position off the ground.
New full-time police officer, Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $63,474 for the purpose of increasing the current level of patrol officer staffing for the town's police department. The nine-month estimated cost is $63,474, is inclusive of benefits, equipment, and uniforms. The full inclusive cost is estimated to be $85,911 and if approved, the full cost will be added to the 2017 default and proposed budget. Estimated tax impact, eight, 0.4 cents per thousand, recommended by the selectmen 3O, recommended by the Budget Committee 62.
Did you mention on the Article 9, the recommendation by the selectmen and the Budget Committee?
I believe I did, but I can reread that for you. Recommended by the selectmen 3O, not recommended by the Budget Committee 53.
Thank you.
Thank you. Establish heating system and oil tank mitigation capital reserve fund, to see if the town will vote to establish a fire department, heating system, and oil tank mitigation capital reserve fund under the provisions of RSA 351, to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to be placed in this fund. Further, to name the selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. Estimated tax impact, eight cents per thousand, recommended by selectmen 21, not recommended by Budget Committee 71. Establish a fire department, equipment, vehicle, capital reserve fund. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry. Chief Mercer?
Point of clarification. On the worksheet, we have a different, both numbers than we do on the actual mark pertaining to the heating oil account. Just point of clarification, on worksheet, the budget should be approved at 62. This is what's marked 30. On warrant, it reads, or selectman 21, not recommended by Budget Committee 71.
There needs to be a correction.
What's wrong?
The tax impact is two cents per thousand.
That was number 11. Thank you. Hold on one second, I'll clarify. I'll make, make those changes. So we had a, let's see. Most of it's copy over here. No, it's 62. Okay. There you go. Okay. Okay, so correction to number 11, establishing heating system, oil tank mitigation capital reserve. The tax, estimated tax impact is two cents per thousand. Select board voted 30. Budget Committee voted in favor, 62. Let me go to the next slide. You want it, the next slide here?
Sorry.
Establish a Fire Department Equipment Vehicle Capital Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to establish a Fire Department Equipment Vehicle Capital Reserve Fund under the provisions of RSA thirty-five-one for the purpose to replace and purchase equipment of vehicles and raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be placed in this fund. Further, to name the Selectmen as agents to expend from said fund. Estimated tax impact is thirty, sorry, three cents. Recommended by Selectmen Two-One, not recommended by Budget Committee Five-To-Three. Next article. Article thirteen, Highway Garage Salt Shed Reserve Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise forty thousand dollars to deposit into the Highway Department Capital Reserve Fund under the provisions of RSA thirty-five-one for the purpose of planning, designing, and building highway salt storage shed. Further, to name the Selectmen as agents to spend from said fund. Estimated tax impact is five cents per thousand. Recommended by the Selectmen Three-Zero, recommended by Budget Committee Six-Two. Article fourteen.
Yes.
Oh, question.
Just because it's in the end up doesn't say recommending the Selectmen as agents to spend. No, it doesn't.
It doesn't say that?
It doesn't have to.
Oh, that's right.
Address the previous year.
The fund was already created.
But you read something different.
That's right, there were changes. I must have the, I think the older rendition. Yeah. In which case, maybe I should grab. This is the normal. Yeah. Thank you. This way I won't hit any other corrections. Thank you for pointing that out.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't know. It's still.
Mr. Chairman?
Nope.
Point of order. I'm wondering if the camera, count two, audio is picking up our people at the audience. I can hardly hear.
She said yes. She said yes.
It is, and then it's always protracted when I edit it through and create the volume.
Yeah, when you're sitting over there, I noticed there's quite a bit of interference from the water machine there. Yeah. Yeah. Article fourteen, Highway Department Truck. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to enter into a three-year lease agreement in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of leasing a new twenty-sixteen or newer heavy-duty truck, plow, and equipment, and to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars for the first year's payment for that purpose. This lease agreement contains an escape clause. Estimated tax impact just under four cents. Not recommended by the Selectmen Two-One, not recommended by the Budget Committee Five-Three. Oh, I'm sorry. Recommended by the Selectmen Two-One, not recommended by the Budget Committee Five-Three. Apologies.
What's the escape clause?
I don't know if, Karen, you want to speak to that?
Yep. If a decision has been made to take it out of the budget, not fund it in the budget, if the budget is cut, means the vehicle goes back to the finance persons or company and the town doesn't have the vehicle anymore. It's a way of getting out of a lease or a loan purchase, similar to what you would do with a vehicle lease.
So, we want to get out, the town wants to get out of the lease?
No, we, we're not looking to get out of the lease, but it allows us to open that door if we had some budget cuts.
Next slide. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to enter into a three-year lease agreement in the amount of forty thousand dollars for the purchase of, purpose of purchasing, or purchase, I'm sorry, purpose of leasing a twenty-fifteen or newer sidewalk, plow, tractor, and equipment, and to raise and appropriate the sum of thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars for the first year's payment for that purpose. The lease agreement contains an escape clause. Estimated tax impact is just under two cents per thousand. Recommended by Selectmen Three-Zero, recommended by, excuse me, Budget Committee Five-Four. Highway Department Loader, three-year lease. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Selectmen to enter into a three-year lease agreement in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the purpose of leasing a new Highway Department Loader and to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars for the first year's payment for that purpose. The lease agreement contains an escape clause. Estimated tax impact just under six cents thousand. Recommended by Selectmen Three-Zero, recommended by the Budget Committee Six-Two. Questions?
Do any of these costs, like a trade-in value on the old equipment?
George, I don't know if you want to?
Yeah, the loader's going to be passed on to the transfer station and the Highway Department Truck, the truck that we're going to be replacing, is similar to the one we sold at auction two years ago, we got nine hundred dollars for.
Article seventeen, Transfer Station Health and Safety Repairs. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighteen thousand dollars for various health and safety equipment transfer station repairs. Estimated tax impact is just over two cents per thousand. Recommended by Selectmen Three-Zero, recommended by Budget Committee Seven-To-One. Article eighteen, SCA Collective One-Year Bargaining Agreement. To see if the town will vote to approve the cost included, the cost item included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Board of Selectmen and the State Employees Association Local Nineteen Eighty-four, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits at the current staffing level. One-year contract, twenty-sixteen, twelve thousand, five hundred, thirty-nine dollars. And further, to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars for the current fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributed to the increases in salaries and benefits over those of the appropriation at current staffing levels paid in the prior fiscal year pursuant to RSA two-seventy-three A twelve-seven. If approved, the term of this collective bargaining agreement, including the pay plan but excluding costs of living increases, will continue in force in effect until a new agreement is executed. Estimated tax impact just under two cents per thousand. Recommended by Selectmen Three-Zero, recommended by Budget Committee Six-Zero. Article nineteen, Special Town Meeting. Shall the Town of Littleton, if Article eighteen is defeated, authorize a governing body to call one special meeting as its options to address Article eighteen cost items only. No tax impact. Costs including operating budget, recommended by Selectmen Three-Zero.
Is there a cost for doing this, like, sometimes if you call a special meeting, there's a cost associated with that? How is this cost?
Right, how would that be calculated? Karen's got an answer for us.
The normal cost to run a meeting runs about fourteen hundred dollars. So, we would have to absorb that within the budget somewhere. The Selectmen would have to decide where that would come from.
Does a select meeting, every two weeks, is that a fourteen hundred dollar item?
No, no. This is just a town meeting where you go and vote, there's a ballot. And if we do our own ballot and not have a printed special and rent it through the machines, we can save a little bit on the cost.
Thank you.
Ron?
That is slightly misleading, to say that the cost is included in the budget, it's not included in the budget, or minded, unless what I just heard.
Did you hear what Ron was saying? He was just saying that we'll, the statement saying that it's, the cost is included in the budget. We admit should, he said.
We could probably, could say, we could change it to say would be found in the budget. It would have to be found in the budget.
And we have to see if the DRA approves that language. So, we can look into that for me.
Did change, Karen said, change the words to what?
Would be found in the budget.
It would have to be found in the budget.
So, it would still say zero-dollar tax impact, but saying funds to come from existing budget.
Thank you.
Or found in the budget. Article twenty, Hill Street Upgrading. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars, of which two hundred and twenty thousand dollars is for the purpose of designing, engineering, and paving, paving and upgrading Hill Street, and to upgrade the sewer systems related to this road, which is estimated at eighty thousand dollars, and to further authorize the withdrawal of eighty thousand dollars to come from the sewer replacement connection and sewer restricted fund balances previously established for this purpose. Any savings realized on this project will be used for and expended on other town roads. Estimated tax impact just under three cents per thousand. Recommended by the Select Board, Select Board Three-Zero, recommended by the Budget Committee Four-To. Article twenty-one. Seer, I'm sorry, Ron?
I'm not sure technically what should happen. The actual voting and Budget Committee was four-two and two, or two abstentions, I don't know. Sometimes in the past, the extensions have been noted on the town, but it was four-two.
They won't be.
It's up to Judy.
I guess that's up to the town clerk to determine, you say? Seal's telling me it's up to the town clerk to determine, and I guess she's not including that this time, but thank you for the question.
As a homeowner and voter and member of the town, I would like those to be included either now and also in the future. They're legitimate votes.
We'll take that to the town clerk for recommendation.
Thank you.
Article twenty-one, Seer Road Upgrading. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate an amount not to exceed one hundred and forty thousand dollars for the purpose of designing, engineering, paving, and upgrading Seer Road. Any savings realized on this project will be used for and expended on other town projects, town road projects. Estimated tax impact, point eight-one-five per thousand. Recommended by Selectmen Three-Zero, recommended by Budget Committee Four-To.
And that was a four-two-two vote.
And Ron noted that this also was a four-two with the two-person abstaining vote.
Just a comment on the abstention, but I don't think the abstention should be mentioned because you have no idea what the reason was. Typically, if someone's abstaining, they give you a definitive reason why they're abstaining. Conflict of interest or whatever. So, without a disclosure, I don't think it should be in here.
But we also don't disclose why we vote yes or no on.
But that's a vote. Abstention's not a vote. You are not voting. You have a reason not to vote. Or you should have a reason not to vote.
Article twenty-two, Upper School Street Upgrading. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, of which one hundred and ten thousand is for the purpose of designing, engineering, paving, and upgrading Upper School Street, and to upgrade the sewer systems related to this road, which is estimated at seventy-five thousand dollars, and to further authorize the withdrawal of seventy-five thousand dollars to come from sewer replacement connection and sewer restricted fund balances previously established for this purpose. Any savings realized on this project will be used for and expended on other town roads. Estimated tax impact, point one-four-six per thousand. Recommended Selectmen Three-Zero, recommended by the Budget Committee Four-To.
I drove all three of these roads last week and got out of the car and walked the roads as well. The road in the most serious disrepair is the upper part of School Street above East Street. It's almost like entering into a different world when you go up there. It's clearly a road that hasn't had any substantial repairs for some years. Seer Road, as you know, or you may know, it's off of Mount Eustis Road, it's a rural road, but it's clearly, like the other two roads really, has a lot of broken asphalt. It has a lot of either what you'd call potholes or moguls developing. And twice a day, five days a week, Seer Road is used for people living in Franconi, East and Sugar Hill area, to come to the industrial park. So, people that live on that road say it's busy two days, two times a day during the work week. And Seer Road, I believe, was the longest section that I measured. It came to almost a full mile, it was about eight tenths of a mile. It's been on the list in past years, we've taken it off because we found other roads that were more serious. And Hill Street, as you may know, if you know where the road is, it goes straight up and it curves around and it ends on the Pest Road property. Again, it has some moguls, it has a lot of broken concrete, and it definitely is in need of repair. So, all three of these streets, again, going back to being responsible for infrastructure, all three of these streets definitely need to be repaired this year if we can get these articles approved. Thank you. Yes, sir?
So, what's the impact to the homeowners when these new sewers are put in? Does, do the homeowners have a fee as well to get booked back into the new system?
Karen, can you answer the question regarding sewer fees or impact on butters to a road that's having a new sewers put in?
I would have to hear the question again, I'm sorry.
Could you repeat the question?
When these road repairs are done and the sewers are upgraded, obviously the old sewer system is taken out, the new system is laid down. Do the homeowners, do they have, is there an impact and a fee to them as this is being done?
No.
No. No. The only impact to them is if their sewer line was bad from the connection to their home.
Generally speaking, we take it to the edge of the road with new pipe, so they won't take the road over here, if that would be the situation.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Small point, small point of order, just when Andrew's calling out some of the estimated tax impact, like this point oh-one-seven, he'll say a little over one cent, point two-nine, oh, zero-two-nine, a little over two cents. But in reading the, like, for instance, twenty-one and twenty-two, instead of saying almost nineteen cents, or the next one, almost fifteen cents, he reads it out as point one-eight-five. And to many people who aren't really familiar with those things, it sounds real low, but it's a big difference between a little over, almost two cents compared to almost fifteen cents.
I'll read those statements.
Please, thank you.
Andrew?
Yes.
The slide and the end of, I don't agree on the whole of this one, the end of this four-one.
I agree, I just noticed that too.
But I'm agnostic on abstentions. You want them in, that's fine, you want them out, that's okay.
Article twenty-three, Funding of Town-Wide Assessment Maintenance Trust Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars to be added to the Town-Wide Assessment Maintenance Trust Fund previously established. The purpose of this funding is to meet the constitutional and statutory requirement that assessments are done every fifth year following RSA seventy-five-eight-A. It is anticipated that a revaluation will take place in twenty-twenty. Estimated tax impact is two-point-six cents per thousand. Recommended by the Selectmen Three-Zero, recommended by the Budget Committee Six-Two. Article twenty-four, Unexpected Conservation Commission Funds. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars to be placed in the Conservation Commission Capital Reserve Fund previously established. This amount represents the unexpended portion of the Conservation Commission's twenty-fifteen appropriation. No tax impact. Recommended by the Selectmen Three-Zero, recommended by the Budget Committee Seven-One. Article twenty-five, Unexpended Welfare Trust Fund. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred dollars to be placed in the local assistance expendable trust fund, with said funds to come from undesignated unreserved fund balance. These funds represent some of the unexpended portion of the twenty-fifteen annual appropriation. These funds represent some of the unexpended portion of the 2015 annual appropriation. No tax impact, recommended by the Selectmen, three zero, recommended by the Budget Committee, seven one. Dan?
Hold on, twenty-four and twenty-five, there's no tax impact. Where is this money coming from?
These are unspent funds. They're coming from the unreserved fund balance.
But where did they come from originally?
They originally raised the taxes, I would imagine, or offset by revenues.
It's left over expenditures that were raised in 2015.
Right. So it's no tax impact this year, but there was a tax impact to produce it originally.
This way DRA has us report them. Article twenty-six, Energy Audits for the Opera House and Fire Station. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of not more than two thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of conducting energy audits on the Littleton Opera House and Littleton Fire Stations to identify ways to reduce energy usage, to further authorize the Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend grants and other funds available for this purpose, and to establish the Board of Selectmen as the agent to expend from this fund. Funds available for this, sorry, estimated tax is three tenths of a cent per thousand. Recommended by Selectmen, three zero, not recommended by the Budget Committee, five two. Article twenty-seven, Energy Conservation Committee Lighting and Energy Improvements. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve thousand five hundred dollars to replace or install cost-effective, energy-efficient lighting and sensors in several town home buildings. Specific lighting improvements will be prioritized and selected based on safety, operational effectiveness, and cost savings. Matching funds will be sought from the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission or others to further authorize the Selectmen to apply for and accept and expend grants and other funds available for this purpose. This appropriation will be non-lapsing until twelve thirty-one, 2017, or until the project is completed. Estimated tax impact is one point seven cents per thousand. Recommended by Selectmen, three zero, recommended by Budget Committee, five two. Article twenty-eight, Opera House Building Maintenance. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand dollars for necessary building maintenance items. Estimated tax impact, seven tenths of a cent, seven bills, yeah, probably a better way to say that, per thousand, seven tenths of a cent. Recommended by the Selectmen, three zero, recommended by the Budget Committee, six one. Article twenty-nine, Parks and Recreation Paving Projects. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars for the purpose of paving the following areas. Pave one thousand two hundred feet linear feet trail at a cost of sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars at Remick Park and Remick Park driveway at a cost of eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. In common concession area and parking area at a cost of eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. In the parking area at the tennis courts at a cost of six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. Estimated tax impact, seven point one cents per thousand. Recommended by Selectmen, three zero, not recommended by the Budget Committee, seven zero.
Correction. Courts are six thousand two hundred and forty dollars.
Okay. I must have just read it wrong. I read it wrong, thank you. Did you get that? Tennis courts cost is six thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Article thirty. Restore Part-Time Librarian Position to Full-Time. To see if the town will raise and appropriate twelve thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars to restore a permanent part-time librarian position to a full-time position. Set funds, which include salary and benefits, to come from taxation. Estimated tax impact, one point seven cents per thousand. Recommended by Selectmen, three zero, not recommended by Budget Committee, seven zero. Aggressive, Article thirty-one, Aggressive Actions Prohibited Ordinance. To see if the town will vote to approve a town ordinance of prohibiting aggressive actions, masquerading as aggressive begging, panhandling, or solicitation can and does have a serious negative impact on the safety of the community, aggressive, loud, repeated demands for cash or other items of value, particularly in places that are bordering, let me see if I, I'm sorry. Places that are particularly intimidating such as near cash dispensing machines or near a person's car is a form of harassment, bordering on extortion, as well as impact the ability of the town to have easily passable sidewalks and controlled movement of traffic. No tax impact, recommended by Selectmen, three zero. Dan?
Yeah, this may be more for Paul LaFleche. If this was not passed...
A donation to the Littleton Community Center Capital Reserve Improvement Fund towards the removal of vinyl siding and lead paint, installing insulation and repairing, repainting, I'm sorry, the exterior of the main building. Tax impact is four cents per thousand. Recommended by the Select Board, two to one, not recommended by the Budget Committee, four to two. Miss Ron?
Recommended by the Budget Committee, four to two.
Yeah. One moment.
I have it as recommended by Budget Committee, four to two.
Okay. I'm gonna reread the, thank you, Ron, I'm gonna reread the result of the voting. Recommended by the Bud, Selectmen, two to one, recommended by the Budget Committee, four to two. Article thirty-five. Petition Warrant Article, Library Building Improvements. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to be placed in the Library Building Improvement Fund, which was created at the 2014 town meeting. Said funds to come from taxation. Estimated tax impact, two cents per thousand. Not recommended by Selectmen, three zero, not recommended by Budget Committee, five to one. Article thirty-six. Petition Warrant Article, Alternative Energy Property Tax Exemption. To see if the town will vote to raise and, I'm sorry, to see if the town will vote to adopt the provisions of NH RSA seventy-two sixty-one through RSA seventy-two seventy-two inclusively, which provide for an optional property tax exemption from the assessed value for property tax purposes for persons owning real property which is equipped with solar energy systems, wind-powered energy systems, or wood heating energy systems intended for use at the immediate site. Such property tax exemption shall be in the amount equal to one hundred percent of the total assessed value of qualifying equipment under these statutes, up to a maximum of twenty thousand dollars for each solar energy system, wind-powered energy system, or wood heating energy system. No tax impact, not recommended by Select Board, two to one. George?
My question is, these were existing systems or new systems?
Ron, do you wanna speak to that?
New system.
New systems.
So if you have an existing system, it would not qualify?
No, is the answer.
Correct.
Yes, Brian?
Was the Selectman of the Budget Committee given a projection about how, how much this exemption would take away from my tax base? And I realize it would be an estimate as in other communities, because if you say there's no tax impact and you remove a hundred to five hundred thousand dollars worth of tax base through this exemption, you are having a tax impact because somebody else is paying for that. They're subsidizing the person that's getting the exemption. So, again, I don't have a feel for it, but what's projected, are we gonna have two per year, twenty per year, thirty per year? We have been a generous community for exemptions for our elderly, our blind, and our veterans. We're not a town that doesn't, isn't generous, but this exemption is something that's a little out of the ordinary.
Dan?
When property is in use under your definition, then they're taking, there's a tax impact. And the purpose of the in-use thing is to keep New Hampshire beautiful with trees and stuff. And so anyway, I see that, they're essentially the same thing. I don't see it as causing the taxpayer to have to pay something for this.
Ron?
It's impossible to know how many people would benefit advantage of this exemption. There are ninety-nine thousand New Hampshire that have adopted this program. How many have actually seen people afford and make these kind of improvements in their homes? I do not know. I do know that there's a grant over one, it's not exactly a booming industry. So the thrust of this article is not just monetary, it's trying to encourage people to do the right thing, which is to seek and use alternative forms of energy. The way the system would work is if you put ten or fifteen thousand dollars of solar on your house, your assessment would not go up by ten or fifteen thousand dollars if it stayed the same. So yes, you can make the case that there's some potential added tax that you're not recognizing, but it's an incentive to get people to move over to alternative energies. So it's kind of a statement of value downholds for energy conservation. So I don't expect hundreds of people to flock in with building permits as a result of this article.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
If I understand you correctly, then Ron, essentially, it's not taking away anything from our present tax base. It's only a concern, right? It doesn't really have an impact on our tax base right now. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. So that is correct, it says there's no impact on the tax rate. Nothing's happened, nothing's happened.
It's not an appropriation. And you could draw an analogy to using undesignated fund balance. You know, we, sometimes we put an article forward, we pay for it, and it's a named fund balance. And you say there's no tax impact, well, there actually is a tax impact. That money was raised previously, could be used for something else. If you don't use it, then at the end of the year, when you set the tax rate, that money can be applied. But that's, it's a kind of a surger argument you can make there. But again, my point is that, you know, this is a statement of principle with things that the town values.
Thank you. Okay, Article thirty-seven. Petition Warrant Article, Article for Grafton County Senior Center. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-four thousand dollars to Grafton County Senior Citizens Council, Inc., through the Littleton Area Senior Center and the Service Link Resource Center for services for Littleton residents in 2016. These services include congregant meals, home-delivered meals, transportation, outreach support, service link support, and more. In fiscal year 2015, the Littleton Area Senior Center provided services for seven hundred and eighty-three Littleton residents. And Service Link provided services for three hundred and ninety-four residents. The cost of providing these services was four hundred and nine thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. The estimated tax impact is four and a half cents per thousand. Not recommended by Selectmen, three zero, not recommended by the Budget Committee, four three.
I'd like to just explain the remaining articles, including this one. The Selectmen voted to not take a position on these warrant articles. These are petition warrant articles that come in from primarily social service and other agencies in the town. And by asking us to vote on these, we perhaps would vote on two of those and maybe now vote on another one. The Budget Committee, am I correct here? The Budget Committee also took the position that they were going to pass on these articles. The Department of Labor and the Administration says you can't pass. Either you take a position one way or the other. If you pass, it's going to be voted as a no. For myself individually as a voter, I will vote on some of these in the affirmative. But when you're put in the position of having to vote on articles as an elected body, you either have to say yes, and then it comes down as a yes, or you say no, and it comes down as a no. If you say pass, it comes down as a no. And that's a ruling that comes in from Concord. The Budget Committee, if you watched any of their hearings, they discussed this at points at length and decided they were just going to pass on all these articles. It may not reflect our individual feelings, but it clearly reflected our group decision.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, if we didn't pass on this, we had, we decided that we would treat all of those articles as a block. That we would not go down individually and say, we like this one, we don't like that. We didn't have enough information, or no information, on most of the articles, not much to make a judgment. So the decision was to vote on them as a block. Vote came down three to four to not support it as approved.
Article thirty-eight. Petition Warrant Article, Boys and Girls Club. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars to support the Boys and Girls Club of the North Country in order to provide a healthy, safe, and productive after-school and vacation camp environment for children from Littleton and other area towns. Estimated tax impact is one point three cents. Not recommended by Selectmen, three zero, not recommended by Budget Committee, four three. Article thirty-nine, Petition Warrant Article, Support Center at Birch House. To see if the town will raise and appropriate a sum of three thousand eighty dollars for the purpose of Support Center at Birch House. These funds will support essential domestic and sexual violence prevention services and emergency shelter for victims and survivors in the community. Estimated tax impact is point zero four cents, four tenths of a cent per thousand. Not recommended by Selectmen, three zero, not recommended by the Budget Committee, four three. Article forty. Petition Warrant Article, North Country Home Health and Hospice. To see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars for the purpose of the North Country Home Health Hospice Agency, Inc., to provide home health and home care services to the underinsured and uninsured Littleton residents. Estimated tax impact is two point eight cents per thousand. Not recommended by Selectmen, three zero, not recommended by the Budget Committee, four three. Petition Article forty-one, Petition Warrant Article, Northern Human Services. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine thousand six hundred and ninety-six dollars and twelve cents for the purpose, I'm sorry, at the town's contribution to the White Mountains Mental Health and Common Ground Programs of Northern Human Services, serving the mental health and development services, service needs of Littleton residents. Tax impact, one point three cents. Not recommended by Selectmen, three zero, not recommended by the Budget Committee, four three. Article forty-two, Petition Warrant Article, Tri-County Community Action Program. To see if the town of Littleton will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eleven thousand dollars for the Tri-County Community Action Grafton County for the purpose of continuing services of Fuel Assistance Program for the residents of Littleton. Estimated tax impact, one point five cents per thousand. Not recommended by the Select Board, three zero, not recommended by the Budget Committee, four three. Article forty-three, Petition Warrant Article, New Beginnings. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand dollars to support the Center of New Beginnings in Littleton, which provides counseling and mental health services to individuals throughout the North Country. In 2015, the Center for New Beginnings provided services for one hundred and twenty-nine individuals who reside in the town of Littleton. Estimated tax impact is one tenth of a cent per thousand. Not recommended by the Selectmen, three zero, not recommended by the Budget Committee, four three. Article forty-four, Petition Warrant Article, Above the Notch Humane Society. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of five thousand dollars to support the Above the Notch Humane Society with the care and feeding of stray and unwanted animals in our area. Tax impact is seven tenths of a cent per thousand. Not recommended by the Selectmen, three zero, not recommended by the Budget Committee, four three.
Thank you, Andrew. Are there any final questions here tonight? Hearing none, I want to thank you all for coming, and I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.